Okay, now we got it. All right, I'll call this meeting into order.
Join Pastor Mike Cosner of Oak River Church for our invocation.
Evening. It's Pastor Mike Cosner at Oak River Church. Our church is located right west of the dog park on Terry Street, and we are excited. We've spent ten, we have now ten years of this last December in Benita Springs ministering the gospel. So thank you for maybe be here. Let me, let me pray for us. Father, we thank you for your grace and your mercy, your kindness to us. We thank you for this beautiful city in which you've placed us, where we thank you for our elected officials, where we ask that you would give grace and wisdom and mercy tonight as they make decisions and do the business of this city, where we pray that you would continue to bless this place, this town, and all those involved. We pray in your name, Jesus. Amen.
Amen.
Join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, roll call.
Councilmember Bogez.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Purdon.
Here.
Councilmember Carr.
Here.
Mayor Gibson.
Here.
Councilmember Corey.
Here.
Councilmember Folic.
Here.
Councilmember Fitzpatrick.
Present.
He's requested to participate remotely.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Councilmember Bogez.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Purdon.
Aye.
Councilmember Carr.
Aye.
Mayor Gibson.
Aye.
Councilmember Corey.
Aye.
Councilmember Folic.
Aye.
All right, well, apologies for being a little late tonight. Let's move on to public comment on agenda items.
We have two registered speakers, Joseph Winterberger, and he'll be followed by Wayne Dunn.
Good evening, everyone. I come here in support of eight C, which is the dredging of the mouth of Spring Creek. A number of years back, I worked with a number of people on the council, primarily Amy Corumba at the time, to get Spring Creek dredged. And that project did get completed, and it had a very positive impact. I live in Pelican Landing, and I can tell you that the properties on the south side of Pelican Landing along Spring Creek were experiencing water in their yards when we had severe storms and things. Since that dredging was done, there was a marked improvement, of course, until Ian came along. That really kind of threw a lot of things out the window. But not so long ago, I contacted Joel, our assistant town manager, to come out and look at the mouth of Spring Creek after the last two hurricanes, which has again been inundated with debris and sand. It's much worse now than it was five or six years ago. It's affected the boating in the area substantially. There are many days where you cannot get out that area, and if you do get out, you have to be very cautious because it may be pretty much covered over when you come back in again. And if you, and many boats have gotten stuck in there because the tide really rips. So Joel was nice enough to come out. We thank him for doing that. He's a terrific guy. Took a look at us, yeah, it looks like, looks like we need to address this, which I guess he has done now, and it prompted the decision tonight to expend money to, to fix the problem. So I strongly encourage you to vote yes on that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Wayne Dunn.
Hi, Wayne Dunn, on behalf of the residents of Spring Creek Village. We have about 120 active boaters in our community, and this is an access and a safety issue. A lot of our residents are older, and sometimes they forget tides, and all of a sudden, it's like they pulled the plug and you hear, and that's the bay going dry. And they try to get in, and people are getting in and out of boats because there's, the access is becoming more and more difficult. And I agree with what Joe says about it's, the dredging, I believe, was five years ago. It's worse now than it was five years ago, especially in that lower part. When we surveyed it with Joel, there were places that were less than 11 inches of water, and that was at a half tide. And it's just making access difficult, and it's a safety issue, and the community asked me to speak, and we encourage you to vote for it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments on agenda items? All right, moving on. Lisa.
There he is.
There she is.
Antonio with the microphone.
Thank you, sir. Tonight it's my honor to present this 15 years of service to Lisa Griggs-Roberson. Just want to congratulate you for sticking around that long. A lot of people wouldn't put up with us that long. It's, it says a lot to her character for, for dealing with us. But I think Arlene may have a word or two.
So, on behalf of your friends at City Hall, congratulations.
Thank you.
And Lisa is a steady hand in our city's financial health, health. She and her team ensure every dollar is accurate for every budget, and every budget is balanced, and every challenge is met with integrity, insight, and dedication. Through economic highs and lows and evolving priorities, Lisa has consistently championed transparency, fiscal responsibility, and our public trust. Her legacy isn't found in her exciting spreadsheets.
Graphs, they're graphs.
Charts, graphs, pie charts, and audits. It's seen through the parks, the streets, the stormwater services that make our city a better place every day. So thank you, Lisa, for your exceptional leadership, unwavering dedication, and a remarkable 15 years of service to the citizens of Benita Springs.
Thank you.
Seems like a picture.
Did we take a picture with you?
All right, consent agenda.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion a second. Roll call.
Deputy Mayor Purdon.
Aye.
Councilmember Carr.
Aye.
Mayor Gibson.
Aye.
Councilmember Corey.
Aye.
Councilmember Folic.
Aye.
Councilmember Bogez.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitzpatrick.
Aye.
All right, any, any comments on the consent agenda?
Looking forward to Memorial Day.
Jim, you're good?
I am. Thank you.
Sounds good. All right, moving right along. Mayor and council member items. Councilmember Folic.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, hopefully all, this may bring an end to the saga in a positive way. And I'd be remiss if I didn't thank our city attorney, whose guidance over the last couple of weeks, I think, has really been key in bringing us to where we are right now. I'm going to have an ask of you this evening. But just as a reminder, believe it or not, I've reminded myself this week. Next week, it will be one year that we started this whole saga. And the amount of time and staff time and the aggravation and feelings have obviously been difficult to deal with. We know about the passions, but just a reminder as I start this, we don't own the building, we don't own the property. We own the heart of that school, but it's theirs. And I think with the new administration, there has been a willingness to work with us on this. If you do remember, the last live meeting we had, the offer was for an 11-foot wall that was a replica or facade of what we see behind the mayor. And we had a meeting on Monday, April 28th, and it was between our city attorney, Mr. Rooney, the school board attorney, Kathy Bruno, school board elected member, Mr. Bill, Bill Ribble, and myself, just the four of us. And after a very direct conversation between all parties, I did restate that we would not accept an 11-foot wall, and that I had some difficulty in even supporting a 15-foot wall. Just to put it on the record, it is not 17 and a half feet. It's actually 17 feet, three inches. So we gave them the three inches back. Keep that in mind, please. It was relayed to Mr. Rooney that the school board engineers believed that they could provide a 16-foot replica wall to full scale of our current facade. They would be able to confirm everything off the old plans, but those are available. It is 17 feet, three inches at the top. So they can go to 16 feet and still meet the wind load and construction requirements necessary for a freestanding wall. As I promised I would do, I reached out to a commercial builder in, here in Lee County, and he did confirm that 16 feet would be pushing it, that if you went beyond 16 feet, more buttressing, more engineering, all that would have to be redone. But 16 feet was doable. It was agreed at the meeting that they would propose back to their board that we would propose a 16-foot, full-to-scale facade. And just so you know, if you do the numbers, that would be about 93% of what the current, of what that is. And what he stated to me was that if we went to 16-foot, there'd be about $120,000 just for the wall, the footer, four impact windows, and the faux brick facade, and stucco replica of the 1921 Benita Springs. That would not include engineering plans, et cetera. So beyond that, he said we'd be looking at probably another $50,000. So closer to 200 than I thought, but that's where they would be. If we agree to this, they can move forward with their plans. And I really got the feeling from both Bill Ribble and their school board attorney that they were going to be able to convince the majority of their members that we've been more than reasonable, and that if we mutually agree to move forward, then we get a true replica to scale that's approximately 94% of the current facade. We don't get blamed for delaying construction and possibly denying our children the opportunity to finally be in a new school after 11 years of working out of portables. Our kids have been portables for 11 years. There was, last night, they had their school board meeting, and NRCA, there was no dissension, there was no discussion. I believe that Bill Ribble and their school board attorney have convinced them that they want to put this behind them as much as we do. I think it's fair, and I would personally support it. I would ask that you do the same, as basically the children are our priority. And I believe Mr. Rooney can comment on their willingness to do a joint press release that our city manager and Laura Taylor would work with them on. Derek, do you want to add to this?
No, I, I would agree with everything you've stated, and yes, the, if, if the city council accepts the proposal, and I want to make one extra clarification, up to the last meeting, we were still talking about the height, whether it be 11 feet or 15 feet, or going to the 17, 17 foot three. The school board's team, the engineering and the building team, was still working off the width of the 11-foot wall, which was closer to 30 feet instead of the 40 feet that is the, the current width.
Thirty-eight.
Thirty-eight. So the current proposal at 16 feet also brings it to scale and brings the width back out to 36 feet. So it wasn't, we weren't, when we were working through this at the very end, it wasn't just working at that. We, when we asked them to put this in writing, we needed to know exactly what it was. We were to catch that and say, no, it has to be to scale, so that it cannot, you know, you can understand what it is. And I want to thank Ms. Bruno, the school board's attorney, for ferreting that out and getting us the correct answers on that, and Mr. Ribble for, for working with us to confirm that.
Thanks.
Oh, sure, I was going to say, but that, my feeling, thank you all for allowing me to do this for the last year. But I think it's a fair, equitable solution, and at the end of the day, I don't want to see our staff and this council, the finger pointing, oh, we've delayed the school because they wanted a facade and a wall. And at this point, I don't think it's a matter about winning. I think we get the best of, of the situation. So Jesse, you had a question?
I mean, to an extent, it is about winning. At this point, we've gone back and forth. It's, we're not going to delay the school over, but what is the, what is the 1.3 feet? Why are they breaking our?
One feet, three inches.
Yeah, why are they breaking?
Over 16 feet, you've got all-new wind load and.
Well, how does, okay, so explain that part to me. The one, the additional one and third foot now creates additional engineering parameters?
Well, now you've got to re-butress, more, more securing of the sides. You have to have a large buttress wall on one side, because remember, it's going to be open in the back. So the wall would have to be substantially reinforced to go up beyond 16 feet. And, you know, talking to somebody who has no vested interest in me, he said to me, yeah, that's pretty accurate. So.
I mean, if you say, okay, so because you're asking that we go along with you on this, I'm going to go along with it. But I feel like this, the beginning, from the beginning, this whole, just the idea of this wall was such a door prize compared to what we actually wanted. And then they gave us a smaller, dinkier version of it, and then they keep going back and forth with us, and it's still, even at the end, they're like, here's your door prize, but here's an abbreviated version of what it could be. Thank you for playing.
Well, I'll look.
And it's like, you know what? And then they want to do a, a joint press conference where we're going to be like, oh, yeah, we love it. No, we don't. No, we don't. So I don't, I mean, they can do a press, I, they should do one.
Well, I, I think it would be in our best interests as a city if our staff.
I think, I, I don't, what I'll, what I'll add is, one of the, the biggest problem we have faced with this issue, and, and the school board's council and I really fared this out when we went through the, the process, is the, the communication, the lack of clear communication, the different parties involved. They've got, they've got essentially a contractor trying to come up with a guaranteed maximum price, trying to build the entire school, slip this into that before that contract has even been signed by the school board. You've got the school board's operational folks, you've got, who are trying to get this done quickly. You've got their facilities posts are trying, trying to get it done cheaply. You've got the school board members who have their own opinions and seeing what's going on in the, in the, in the public outcry. And I think the advantage of having the joint press release is that we're working together to control what the message is. I, I would hate to see this resolved and then have a statement from either the city or the school board that either walks back what's been accomplished or claims something that has not been worked out. And so there, I think that's the advantage of having the, the joint press release. And the fact that we had our meeting after they did meant that really the conversation happens here tonight.
And first of all, guys, I'm not happy. Not happy at all.
I can tell you don't even want to sell this, but you're doing it anyway.
But, but I think it, again, I, I keep, you know, you pray about it, you think about it. What's the most important thing? Our kids. Right now, they've got a budget crunch up there. I don't want to see us being the excuse for a delay of a school that should have been built five, six years ago. That, you know, it's all behind us. The school's destroyed. We know it. You know, we've got people saying, we actually had a citizen, a board member, not our board, but an advisory member, who wanted to see if we could tear down the school and move it to the site of our empty lot, because I guess we could keep the bricks. I mean, there's just not a realistic approach to what this is all about. We don't want bricks on our land.
Sure. Okay, so with the wall portion, this wall has nothing, they're not putting kids in the wall, right? So us, by, by us going back and forth with them to get it how we would want it, and even if, whatever, if it's worth it or not at this point, I don't know. But it's, that doesn't, shouldn't hold up, there's, I don't, that's a big leap to say that's going to stop them from a budgetary standpoint from moving forward with the school. They're still going to move.
You're going to have to re-engineer.
They have more money than, than most entities down in Southwest.
I don't think we wanted Jesse even to get in a discussion on what was done in the past. And I'll, I'll agree with some of their new board members that what was done previous to this school board, the, the current members, the new members, probably wouldn't have happened, but there's been a lack of oversight, there's been, to Derek's point, a true lack of transparency. And I know that a couple of people on the school board were really embarrassed because they were told one thing when in fact another was true. But we can't fix their school board, we can't fix their staff, and it's really tough when we have no ownership of the building or the school. And if we owned that land or that school, I'd feel very differently.
I get it, but we're the ones holding the bag, and now they want us to smile in a picture.
No.
I, I think we're the, the bigger party here. Again, we've got something that'll be on Dean Street where it is now. Jamie will be able to drive by and say, yeah, that's what the old school looked like. You know, that looks exactly like the old school, but it's the best we can do.
Is it three inches shy or a foot?
It's one foot, three inches shy. But it will be to scale, and it won't be the, I mean, it, not that it was funny. You had people who were not engineers saying, well, we can put a 16-foot wide by 11-foot wall. It would be comical. It would be a joke. This will truly be to scale. So it'll be 36 feet wide instead of 38, and 16 feet tall instead of 17 feet, three inches. But it'll look exactly like that.
Laura, you had a comment?
Oh, I'm going to be in the doghouse again. But you just said, at least it's to scale. And for what purpose? The kids? I think the kids want the coolest building in the world. They want to be like, Elon Musk is going to be like thinking, this is where space activity, we're thinking the future. And we have no oversay, and we have no, but we're going to spend $200,000 on a wall.
No, we're not. Where did you get that number from, Laura?
You said 120 to do the footer, and then 50 for the plane, and then everything's more expensive. Actually, it's probably going to be double that because everything is doubling.
We're not paying that, right?
No, we're not paying a dime.
Okay, but why are we even asking them to spend that money on that?
Because.
Instead of on the actual kids. Who is this for? You were the kids. Are you and the kids? I mean, I'm sorry, I mean. I mean, I'm sorry, I mean...
It's, it's for the people that were born and raised here.
Yes.
That had a right to see that stay and we have no control. Same, well, let's tear down Independence Hall in Philadelphia. It's old and I wasn't born there. We could save all the money on maintaining that. There are certain things, that's one of the last pieces of our legacy. And it's going to go, at least there'll be a reminder, people will have a sense of pride in it. And it's not costing us any money, Laura, although we have paid for that wall many times over. And we're not taking away from the school. I don't know where you've got it in your head that they're taking money away from the school.
We have no oversight, we have no, no control over what they actually do.
They already have designed and they have a school ready to go, Laura. The, the new bright shiny school. So I'm not sure why you're saying that we're jeopardizing that.
Plans can change. Money is lining up.
What plans, Laura? I don't understand what you mean by plans can change.
Well, you can change what you put into a room. You can do the latest technology or you can do the most recent...
And that's what they're doing.
Yeah.
And they're giving enough, enough seats for our kids.
But the building isn't going to be done until three years. So where...
What does that have to do with what we're doing here today? We're asking for a historical facade to replicate what was there, what was destroyed.
Well, I just think we're taking two-hundred thousand dollars away from their budget that they could put toward...
That is not true.
An innovative, new program.
That is not true.
That's not even close to what's going on.
They already had fifteen, fifty thousand dollars, according to them, fifty thousand dollar budgeted.
We spent how much to move Goodri, Goodbred?
Not this council.
Well, right, correct. But we spent how much? And now we're thinking about just tearing it down. When do you think that that wall is going to be compromised and have to be taken away? I just think we're spending, you know, more money.
Laura, we spent city money to move the Goodbred building.
And, no, and, and...
But Laura, we're not talking about sending city money.
No, 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 no. The, 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 the company that built there paid a hundred and twenty-five thousand. We, as a city, had to add to it because it cost more because the termites had eaten into it and they wanted to move everybody over, right? So the city then contributed. But the, the owner of the property did pay money. See, Matt is shaking his head.
Well, I think Jamie has a comment.
Help me here.
Yes, okay, so born and raised, attended this school. I have a brother-in-law whose grandparents attended this school. He attended the school. Many people I know who attended the school. And the community's outreach to us as council feels it's very important that we maintain. And the least we have been able to do is get a wall. So I feel it's very important as the community. It's not being, I have children that's went through the school system. I understand how important it is and dollars are for schools. I, I understand that part, but it's not taking from that. So we have been working on this for an entire year. It's time to put this to rest. Let's call the motion to accept this. I wish it was the seventeen foot, three inches. We're not getting that. They can look at it as it's only one foot, three inches and we can look at it that way. But unfortunately, this is where we're at. I think it's the best compromise we've gotten so far in an entire year. It's time for council to move on, the school system to move on. Let's, I'll call the motion to vote right now at approving the sixteen-point-three-foot wall that the proposal is for.
Sixteen feet even.
Oh, six foot even.
Sixteen foot even, right.
They're not going to say three inches.
Whatever Niles said.
Sixteen feet. I'm calling the, um, motion.
I said...
All right, before we vote, Chris, did you have any comments?
Uh, you know, what we have seen in the community is a outpouring of support for me, for the, for this facade, the wall and so forth. What, you know, what's actually being spent is money that people in Benita Springs have paid into the school district. So it's not like this is new money coming out of their pocket, you know? It's sort of like the library. I mean, we paid into the library for twenty years before we got a new library and we still pay in for the library. So, you know, I think this is the best deal that we're going to get. I always look at what the best alternative is to a negotiated agreement. And the best alternative for the school district is to do nothing. They don't have to do anything. So the fact that we reached an agreement with them, I think, says that we, we spent enough time on this, we need to get on with other business of the city. The taxpayers, I think, have spoken in terms of what they would like to see. And it's, you know, I think we, we can look the taxpayers in the face and say, we did, we've got the best deal we're going to get. And we spent a year at it. I think spending any more time is not the wise things to do. So I'm going to be voting for this agreement.
And Jamie's called the question, I'll second calling the question.
So there's no, there's no question?
It was a motion.
Second on the motion.
Second on the motion, I'll provide it.
Um, Jim, did you have any comments?
Yeah, I'd first like to go ahead and thank the, the wonderful work that Nigel has done, both with Arlene and Derek over the past year. And as much as I'm disappointed by the fact that this is what we, where, where we're at, I think that it's important to retain that this touch back to the past and part of our heritage. I think it's a critical part of remembering the core values of our city. And so with that, thank you Nigel, Arlene, Derek and all those that supported. And I'd also like to recognize the openness of dialogue with the new, uh, school board members. So, um, thank you to all of you.
Thank you, Jim. And for myself, I mean, we are miles away from where we started. We, we wanted to save both of the historic buildings and then we were hoping to save one. And now we're recon, well, not even reconstructing, we're constructing a, a wall that looks like the old building. So I mean, it's, it's nowhere near what we'd hoped for. It's nowhere near what most of the community wanted. But the other alternative was in excess of a million dollars, possibly two million dollars. So for the taxpayers, you know, it's unfortunate, but this is probably the best we're going to get. And, you know, like Chris said, they don't have to do anything. So, you know, we should, I don't want to say we should be thankful we're getting something, but I mean, at least we can let our constituents know we, we fought as best we could and, you know, we, we're getting some kind of representation for it, so. So with that, if there's no more comments, we'll roll call.
Councilmember Carr.
No.
Mayor Gibson.
Aye.
Councilmember Corey.
Aye.
Councilmember Folic.
Aye.
Councilmember Bogaz.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Purdon.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitzpatrick.
Aye.
Motion carries six to one.
All right.
Thank you all.
Thank you. Item B. Nigel again. Resolution appointing a member to the Veterans Advisory Committee.
This is not fun, but it, it certainly, I think, we'll all be delighted. Arlene and I have been working on our former county commissioner, Ray Sandelli, who as you all know was not only a Navy veteran, but a Blue Angel. And typical Ray, he said he didn't want to commit unless he knew he could actually put in the time and do it. So Ray has submitted his, uh, application and will be the final empty seat that we had on the Veterans Advisory Board.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion second, roll call.
Mayor Gibson.
Aye.
Councilmember Corey.
Aye.
Councilmember Folic.
Aye.
Councilmember Bogaz.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Purdon.
Aye.
Councilmember Carr.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitzpatrick.
Aye.
All right. Good get there, Nigel. Item C.
Arlene helped a lot.
Uh, discussion on spot dredging Spring Creek and direction to staff. Councilwoman Bogaz.
Um, yeah, at the beginning of February, staff and I received several calls and emails regarding, um, concern residents and the challenges of navigating the waters at Spring Creek. In response, I did speak to staff to better understand the concerns so I could provide an accurate information to the residents. Upon review, staff did identify some issues and I've asked Matt to please, um, provide those to council today. And following Matt's update, I would like to request council's approval for staff to move forward with this proposal. Matt, please take the floor.
Thank you. So Spring Creek, you may recall, we dredged it back in two thousand nineteen, I believe. That was a culmination of a probably a three-and-a-half to four-year permitting ordeal with the state and the U.S. Army Corps because it, it hadn't been dredged in the past and there are very stringent rules there. So we did obtain a dredging permit, conducted dredging operations. The one unique thing there to know is that it's, it's not a typical depth. It's actually negative three-and-a-half. Normally, you'd try and dredge to negative five-and-a-half, but that's because of the, um, the restrictions that were placed on us through the permitting and it's part of the deal. So after, actually after Ian and then again after Milton, we surveyed the creek to see if there's any sedimentation, particularly after the complaints Councilwoman Bogaz received and we were receiving as well. We did find, right at the mouth, there's an area that's, that's really dynamic and it gets sedimented in. There's about five hundred cubic yards that should be removed. The only area that we can dredge is within the permitted template that we had, had received the permits for years before. But that five hundred yards does fall within that permitted area and it is causing a navigation obstruction. So there are some emergency permits at the state level that have been going on since Milton that we would, you know, like to avail ourselves of. And this request would be for the additional engineering services to see it through to completion, but really to start that permitting application process with the state as well as with the, the federal side to see if we can get some quicker permits than three-and-a-half years. We think it would cost somewhere around a hundred and thirty thousand in construction costs based on the volume of five hundred yards to dig out, which, you know, is not, not nearly what the original project required, but it, you know, is, is a funding expense that would come out of this work if we move forward.
So is this mainly, um, right at the, the mouth?
Yeah, it, it's, if you look at the cross-sections and it's kind of hard to see, but, and, and don't hold me to this, but it's, it's roughly a three-hundred-foot stretch. The channel's maybe twenty-five feet wide and the siltation varies, but, you know, upwards to two feet in some areas. So it's, it's really right at the mouth, it kind of dips out and sediments out and it's been scouring kind of underneath the mangroves and you, you can't really drive your boat underneath the mangroves.
So you said negative three?
Negative three-and-a-half.
That means we're, we, we can remove three-and-a-half?
That, that's all you can remove.
Well, I mean, that, that's helpful. I've, I've gone out thankfully on a paddleboard at low tide and there was less than a foot there. So there's no way...
Well, well, you, well, when I say negative three-and-a-half, that is from a, a reference of NAVD nineteen eighty-eight, which is a zero. So if you go out paddleboarding in January, when we have our strongest tides on a full moon, you are, you know, no matter what we dredge, you may still notice that it's, it's shallow. And, and there's not much we can do about that. That's, that's tied to the, the depth that the dredging permit allows. And that's really tied to the fact that we were dredging inside of the Asteroid Bay Aquatic Reserve, which this is in. So it has a lot of stringent oversight.
Okay. Um, Nigel, you had a...
You have a question, Matt, and this is, it's not an ask, it's just... Is my voice better with a musical accompaniment?
I know, and Dexter's to beat, right?
So it, it's not an ask, but just you guys did a great job of piggybacking with the, the beach project. If we did something like that, are there any other, I'm thinking of the Imperial River, where there are those, there are some blockages along the river where we might be able to utilize the equipment or the company?
Just so for clarification, for federal funding, the city does not piggyback its cooperative purchasing?
That answers that question.
No, there's, there's really not, this is a, in the dredging world, this is a very small amount of material. Even the original project was very small. So we're going to see higher unit costs. It's honestly more of a headache and a nuisance for someone to mobilize to come, come dig this out because it's, it's, it's stretched over a small, small distance, a small amount. I know, I know I said two feet, it sounds like a lot, but when you're using an excavator to dig this out, it's, it's really not a lot.
Do we know who the company would be that would be doing the excavation?
No, uh, we, we would put that to hard bid as we get, uh, our permits.
So, and again, Arlene, I'll defer back to you or to Derek. Once we knew when somebody was awarded the contract, would it be inappropriate to ask them, hey, while you're here, can you give us a bid on other?
We're not seeing what, what you're, what you're asserting. We, we, we're, what we've been asked to look at is Spring Creek.
Right.
We don't have evidence that there's shoaling or anything else in the Imperial River that, that meets or warrants this. And if it did, the entity that maintains that is the West Coast Inland Navigation District through Lee County, so it wouldn't be our expense. They did not do the dredging project in Spring Creek because there's no public access. So that's kind of why that fell to the city years ago.
Thank you. Laura?
Can we, like how, um, folks who develop here, they have exceptions? Can we ask for an exception to, to dredge a little bit further and more?
Did I mention it was like a four-year permit process ordeal?
I know, I know, you like, could hop on...
The, the, the permits and the regulation that apply specifically to this project...
So this will take four years?
No.
Oh, good.
Only because of the storms and the emergency permit mechanisms that are in place. But to get, and the fact that we have a permit, but to get that permit was a very difficult permit to get. There were many at the state that did not want to issue it.
Oh, so, so you do have an opportunity since the permit's in place, which typically would not be an opportunity availed to the city.
Go ahead, yeah.
Correct.
Quickly, before they change their mind.
So, uh, what, let's say that you started the project with the excavator. Is this a two-week project or...
Uh, you know, I would say it's, it's all kind of in a concentrated area. It could, two weeks is a little, a little aggressive because you mobilize things in, you mobilize things out. But, yeah, the reality of the work is it's probably no longer than a month, not even. Once, once they're on site.
And how long would the, the bid process take in going through all that?
Uh, you know, the bid process, it takes us three, three months really to get someone in front of you with an award, you know, a recommendation of award. And then generally, they take, it, it, once that's happened, they take some time in producing their insurances. And, and really what they do is they work with you on their schedule as to where they are in their workload as to when they can come. So we, you know, it's probably six months, you know, from the time that you put it out to bid to the time that someone's going to show up. That, and that's aggressive, it depends on the scale of the project.
Maybe January one.
Okay.
Any other comments? All right. We got a motion in a second yet?
Yeah.
Motion, so moved to second.
All right, roll call.
Councilmember Corey.
Aye.
Councilmember Folic.
Aye.
Councilmember Bogaz.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Purdon.
Aye.
Councilmember Carr.
Aye.
Mayor Gibson.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitzpatrick.
Aye.
All right. Moving on to, uh, item D, discussion of additional regulations on electric bicycles. Councilman Corey.
Yeah, back on April second, uh, I introduced a proposal to establish pedal-only zones in the city, in the pedestrian-heavy areas that would, uh, treat electric bicycles the same as manually operated bicycles and saying if you're going to ride them in pedestrian-heavy districts, you have to pedal them and not use your electric motor. There's been a number of cities that have gone about trying different things. I just worry about, especially as we get into the summer season, Memorial Day, Fourth of July, all the activity is going to go on downtown, that we could, you know, have some unfortunate happenings down there. And I know that other cities have tried to limit the speed, You know, I know that other cities have tried to limit the speed, tried to do other things, but it seems to me if you're going to enforce something, it's fairly easy to see if somebody's pedaling their electric bike as opposed to using the motor. So, if we're going to ask LCSO to keep an eye on things for the officer that's in a car, it would seem like he could tell if an electric bicycle was being pedaled, or it wasn't. So, it would be something fairly easy to enforce. But I just thought it would be time to maybe discuss it again, see what staff had come up with, what Derek might be suggesting we do. But it's basically trying to cure a safety problem, I think. And I have seen some amazing speeds being reached by some of these bikes, especially on the sidewalks. So, I'll turn it over to Arlene and Derek to give us some...
Sure, I can give you some additional. I haven't been able to find any cities that actually adopted a pedal-only zone within... That isn't only to the exclusiveness of bicycles. And I was... I might find... There may be bicycle lanes, essentially, they're exclusive, no pedestrians. But I didn't find anything in the statutes that have been adopted over the last few years with e-bikes that would prevent us from adopting a pedal-only zone. The biggest single question is, for the council's direction, is which zones we're talking about. As we go back to like the no-truck area, it becomes very clear that we have to define exactly where these would apply if you want to have bicycle regulations elsewhere in the city that are more lenient. For instance, the memo that was attached with respect to Collier County, that essentially allows e-bikes everywhere in the city, in the county, with some restrictions when they interface with pedestrians in other areas. State statute actually requires that if you do adopt an e-bike regulation, that you have to adopt a speed limit as well, and that speed limit is 15 miles per hour. So, the issue is probably, for our purposes, to, one, have conversation with the sheriff's office to make sure their input is as the enforcement agency has received, and any tweaks that they would like to see. But, two, to define exactly what areas we're talking about. If it's downtown, we would need to come up with a map. There are obviously with the medians there, there are constrained roadways, and so whether or not we're prohibiting them, or just saying they have to pedal only, these are the kind of details we would need to get direction on, to come bring something back.
Well, I think definitely downtown, the sidewalks anyway. It's kind of overloaded now with people walking back and forth between different restaurants and such. But also downtown, the road itself is...
Pretty narrow.
Well, it's shallow, so bikes are allowed to be in the roadway, and it's only a 25 mile an hour road. A lot of these bikes are doing around 25 miles an hour, so they should be able to keep up with traffic in the road and be out in the road. So, I'm fine with a 15 mile per hour limit on the sidewalks. It kind of makes sense. It's, you know, when there's nobody else on the sidewalk, you know, I can see going faster. But the problem is, they continue doing the 20, 25, 28, and some of them are buying bikes online that do 40. So, and it's all context-related. If there's people walking or other bikes on the sidewalk, they need to slow down and be careful going around these other people. You know, they have to share the sidewalks, so. We definitely need to do something, and, you know, so I support writing that up, either designating certain sidewalks. Although, in my mind, really, any sidewalk in the city, I can see limiting it to the 15 miles per hour. Maybe not the multi-use path, it is wider, and there's some more room. But I know there's been a lot of complaints of people, you know, hauling butt on the... There, too, on the e-bikes, so that might be a possibility. And we do have the bike lane in that section anyway, so I think they could easily be out there. Jesse, you had a comment?
Okay, so just to be... I'm not pooping it, so just don't get me wrong, because I do want to get these under control. But just to be fair to LCSO, they're going to hate it, and it's unenforceable. It's going to be similar arguments that they had to the no-truck downtown lane. It's going to be the same thing. They're going to have to have somebody to do it. They don't have enough bike units, it is. They don't have enough bikes, as it is. And they're going to have to... It's going to be very hard for a car to actually do the enforcement. So, there are going to be obstacles from the LCSO standpoint, we need to be understanding of that. And then, if we do decide to do it within a confined... I think we ask them on this, because I'm of two minds on this. The idea that we keep it downtown with the truck ordinance that they're already annoyed with anyways, so now it's a truck and a bike, okay, fine. But is that actually going to fix the problem along Terry and East Terry and West Terry and things like that, where people are going 30 miles an hour and not looking? So, I don't even know if it fixes the issue. So, then it's like, are we just doing something, and it's not going to address the problem? I don't like that either. So, I would say we need to get with LCSO and see what could practically work, and then we go from there. I don't think we start with the conclusion that, yes, we have to do this, and we have to do it right here. I think we can work with them and then figure out what's plausible. And then we have to temper expectations, too, because the reality is, if we say it's 15 miles per hour citywide, okay. Now, we don't have to just watch this area, and now we feel like it worked. But now, if there's not... There's a lack of enforcement, everybody's going to be annoyed. And it's going to be like, we, you know, we did this, you know, we did this big thing and nothing changed, kind of thing, so.
And it's kind of like car speeding.
Exactly.
When we're riding around, we see other cars breaking the rules, and it's like, there's never a cop around when you need them.
Right.
So, I mean, you're always going to have people breaking the law. It's just...
It's not going to fix it.
When they're seen, you know, they can be addressed, and hopefully, it changes their habits long-term, so.
So, I... Yeah, I mean, discussion with LCSO in regards to what the ramifications would be on them from an enforcement perspective and man-hour perspective, and in regards to what they feel would be reasonable as far as whether it would be a city, or whether it would be downtown, or what... Or if they're like, either way's a disaster, do it however you want, then we know, but...
Well, I...
And that's it.
Actually, I want to kind of echo off of Jesse. And Florida is the top-third state in the country that has the highest cyclist and pedestrian deaths. So, we're in the top-third in a very uncomfortable statistic. And we're going to ask, and that's due to mostly speeding and distracted driving, right? And we're going to ask our sheriff's officers to see if that person is pedaling in a certain place. Doesn't that actually mean that person is going to be distracted while driving? And it just doesn't, like, as Jesse's saying, like, the logistics just aren't worked out here. And does it actually fix anything? So, I would consult with FDOT to see what they're looking at as a statewide, because that'll trump city or municipality. So, look at this FDOT and what LCSO wants to kind of put into the mix that makes it workable. I mean, we want a workable situation.
Nigel?
Yeah, I'm not going to throw anybody on the bus here, because I really do love, especially our deputies that live here in Benita Springs. And is there a sergeant in the back of the room?
Yeah, she is.
Okay, close your ears, Sergeant. The bottom line is, some of our deputies, when they had time, they understood what our concerns were. So, it's amazing what one deputy set up at West Terry Street and Old 41 could do when he observed a heavy truck enter that area. And one of his compadres happened to be down at Benita Beach Road, which meant that the truck traveled all the way through, and they started pulling people over. They were just spot checks, they were doing it an hour, half an hour. Amazingly, if you look, and I've heard it from some of the business owners, truck traffic has started to decrease, and has been decreasing, on that section of Old 41. It's like anything else, if guys think they're going to get a ticket, or it's going to be a problem, even being stopped for 15, 20 minutes, that's money to a truck driver. It's just not worth the hassle, so they're going somewhere else. I think if we got with the sheriff's department, I'd be willing certainly to make the first motion to say, "If they need a couple bicycles, we'll buy them. We just need a couple deputies that are in enough shape to ride bikes."
Because we've got bikes.
They just got new bikes, so they have bikes.
Okay, so they...
They're no-pedaling.
There's a way to do this, and I agree with... I mean, and I appreciate Mike, considering the business, he said, realizing that we don't want a death to be the reason that we pass an ordinance.
Agreed.
We do something proactive, we're sending the right message.
Chris, you had a comment?
Yeah, I just get back to, what are we trying to accomplish? We're trying to accomplish improved safety for our residents, people that run their businesses, and especially the kids that go to the elementary school and the middle school. So, as Laura said, Florida ranks pretty high in the number of traffic accidents, including bicycles, and Lee County ranks pretty near the top of all the Florida counties in terms of that same thing. So, you know, we can... I'm good with what Mike is suggesting. You know, we take an area like downtown, from, say, Terry Street to Benita Beach Road, see how it works, and then we can figure out how to tweak it and make it work perhaps in other parts of the city. But I'm concerned with the number of events we got downtown, the number of kids that are going to be downtown on 4th of July, and so forth. And I just want to improve safety so that nobody gets hurt, because those bicycles are speeding along pretty quickly.
Jim, did you have any comments?
Yeah, I've got a few comments. One, first, I would... I like what Collier County did as a baseline for the information that was distributed earlier today or yesterday. Two, I think it needs to be global in its application. I think that the applications, whether they be speed, whether they're road or sidewalk, need to apply to all sections of town. Contrary to comments made just specifically downtown, the high degree of travel by workers on East Terry, back and forth along that section of road, is significant, and is impacted by both regular bicycle riders, e-bike, and walking pedestrians. And so, I think that this has to be global in its approach. I think that we need to identify specific pedal-only zones. And we need to clearly identify that, as we identify targeted areas, that we can go ahead at our review, make updates to that plan, and designate that going forward. And lastly, to Laura's comment about looking to the state. When we met on our legislative review with John Martin, his comments were specific when we raised this issue on e-bikes. His comments were made to us, "Well, we're kind of behind the curve on that from a state level. If you've got any suggestions, we'd love them." So, I don't know that we can necessarily look for the state to provide an early solution. And then, lastly, the ultimate throw out there is, is there consideration where we have some control for the registration of certain e-bike classifications and above? And that I know that there's a cost associated with it, but with that cost becomes a fee for applying for that registration. So, those are my thoughts and comments.
Thank you, Jim. Jesse, you had another comment?
As we worked on the ordinance for the trucks downtown, Arlene and I went and met with Blake and kind of talked of the logistics. I'd be willing to do that again, if that's something you guys would like to do.
Yeah, we should definitely get their feedback.
We definitely have to get something from them, because I just don't want to put it up, and then they're learning about it, you know what I mean?
No, I agree, I think we need to contact them, and if you're willing to have a meeting. You know, being downtown in the evenings, there is a lot of pedestrian walking and around where there isn't room for the bikes. So, electric bikes downtown, I don't know if this is a possibility, but not even allowed on the sidewalks where they're in the street, because it's... They go up to the miles per hour going downtown, so that's an easier way, maybe the sheriff's department can also enforce, because if they're on the sidewalk, are they pedaling, are they not pedaling? What mile per hour are they going to get the radar gun to see? I mean, I just feel like, maybe if you... They weren't allowed on the sidewalks, because there's really not room for them to operate there anyways, that they're on the street. And then, it's easier for the sheriff's office to maybe enforce it a little more.
I think... I love that, but I want to say, and I could be wrong, but Derek, part of that goes back to the initial, if they're allowed to be on the bike, if they're allowed to be on the sidewalk, they're allowed to be on the road. And that was the kind of that...
So, Florida law treats a bicycle... The same rights are provided to bicyclists, e-bikes, to bicyclists. There's a little bit of a wiggle room where they say that we can regulate e-bikes on sidewalks. So, my recommendation, I'm writing down notes of what I'm hearing, would be a city-wide 15 mile per hour for e-bikes operating on the sidewalk. That would be essentially the Collier regulations with a speed limit. And then, for downtown sidewalks, pedal only, and maintain a 15 mile per hour, too, because even bicyclists riding their bicycle could go pretty fast. Now, if you're truly pedaling an e-bike, it's a much heavier vehicle. You probably can't make 15 miles per hour, but I think that that is a safe consideration. Now, that gives the option of the e-bike operators to ride in the street at higher speeds, if they choose to do that. But if they're going to be on the sidewalk, the 15 mile per hour and pedal only would be the zone. So, you know, I would bring something back to you with a map for the pedal-only zones. And, you know, I can talk to Public Works and the community development about, you know, the sidewalk plans and see if there's any other areas that we think are problematic. Now, with respect to LCSO, it's like any other speed limit. You know, there's speed limits in neighborhoods, there's speed limits in downtowns, and then there's speed limits out on the highway. They're going to go and enforce where the risk is, so.
Isn't that ironic?
Yeah, it is. I'm turning it off.
Talked for as long as I could to...
Also, on the Collier County thing, it did mention that under the age of 16 would be allowed to ride e-bikes on the sidewalks, I guess to keep the children safe.
And it provides that their parents can ride, their parent can ride with them.
Yeah, the e-bike on the sidewalk, if they're with the kids. I thought you couldn't ride an e-bike if you were under 16. I don't know if that changed when the state changed the laws a couple years ago, but...
I didn't see...
I know previously, it was...
Yeah, I didn't see anything in the statutes. Now, what we're looking at with respect to Collier is, you can see the ordinance, it has strike-throughs and underlines. They have some existing regulations, that you're not seeing the full context of what's going on there, because they classify all three types of bikes, but there's not one regulation on any of those classifications. So, we're not seeing the full picture of what they're doing. Assuming the state's regulation of what they grant to local authorities is broad, and it does provide that we can regulate e-bikes and bicycles without reference to age, what I will do is, I will... I do not read that to say where the state has said 16-year... Kids under 16 can ride e-bikes to mean that we can say they can. So, I'll confirm that.
The other thing we'd like to look at is, they're buying electric dirt bikes now. They're not bicycles at all, you know. It is an electric dirt bike, and I know they go much faster, 40, 50 miles an hour. But I see them riding them, you know, up and down the sidewalks all over town. So, that might be something we need to look at. In the past, it was easier to spot, because when they're on a dirt bike, you heard the engine running, and, you know, you could catch them more easily. But now that they're electric and silent, it's...
None of these regulations are really addressing micro-mobility devices, e-scooters, all those. Those scooters can go pretty fast, and they can't be pedal-only. So, we're going to have... There's going to be more to this than just the e-bicycle situation, because we have to address it.
16-year-olds can't operate a Class 3.
Yeah, you have to be 16, true. Okay, so that's what the...
Yeah, Class 1, Class 2.
But you can get a motorbike.
But, so, it says a 15-year-old, so is that below 15 can't ride them at all?
No, 15 and below. There's no age limit.
Okay. All right, is that enough direction?
It is.
Okay, thank you.
All right, we'll move on to item E, discussion of a request to provide a statement of the city's intent to manage the Benita Springs portion of the Burt Project property in satisfaction of Florida Forever application requirements. Councilmember Corey?
Yeah, as you may know, we're pursuing... We're going to be pursuing a grant with Florida Forever, assuming that there's a compromise somewhere in our future between the Senate and the House for funding of Florida Forever. But there is money still in the bank accounts of Florida Forever that were appropriated in prior years that are available. But one of the things that we need to do is to send them a more adequate letter for the fact that the city would manage the property if it were acquired for the purposes of the rail trail. So, Arlene has attached a letter written by Volusia County with respect to stewardship of the property that had to do, in that case, with their environmental protection program. that had to do in that case with their environmental protection program and a, and a piece of property that they were gonna acquire under that. So we would use the same kind of language.
Yeah, Doug Hadaway with Trust for Front Public Lands provided this as a sample there. If it's directed by council, we may be looking to adjust that to the Florida Forever program. The one caveat was is Doug has asked both the Village of Astero and Collier County to draft their own letters as well. The feedback he received was that the, the resolution inter-local government agreement between the three entities was not enough, a strong enough language to define maintenance.
Again, this is not, and expenditure of money, it is not, you know, we're not, we're not going down the path of talking about the letter of credit again or anything along that line. This is just providing a document so we can get the application for the, for the grant under Florida Forever in process.
And I believe the ask is for this, the portion within the city limits.
Yeah, portion within the city limits. So I will make a motion to approve that.
Second.
We have a motion second. Laura, you have a comment?
Well, once again, in the doghouse, I'm sure. But this letter that was provided indicates that the county is behind, is the maintenance behind it.
This is just a sample letter, Laura, a template. It's a template.
I know. Well, then why didn't they do a template from just one municipality? Because it's going, the onus is going to fall on Benita Springs, Astero. Lee County's not interested. Collier County is only interested in one section, one like pivotal place. And then it's all going to be on Astero and Collier. That's, I will repeat this, where's the money from BERT? What did they get? What is the annual membership? How, why won't they just repeat the success of Naples? And why is it that our five million dollar ask is now seventeen million dollars? Or is it twelve and twelve? Yeah, seventeen million now. Just like on paper, but we're there. And you're just moving the train, imagery implied, down a road that is going to cost us mil- millions and millions of dollars.
Well, I can tell you.
And not provide infrastructure. It's not gonna have any impact on construct, on, on traffic congestion at all.
Well, it have, I think it, I think it will have a lot of impact on economic development downtown and in Benita Springs. But, you know, I can tell that you don't like the idea.
I love the idea. I just think there are other projects that we need. We need roads that connect and we need storm water management treatment centers. I mean, really, water's gonna be an issue in the near future. But, you know, this five-and-a-half-mile bike trail will help downtown businesses, okay? But they're doing great now. And it's not gonna take traffic off the road. So everybody who's complaining about traffic is still going to be complaining about traffic.
Well, we, I understand that you don't like the idea.
I like the, I think it's a fabulous quality of life improvement. I just think there are other projects that we need to get finished and accomplished.
The agenda item deals with whether or not we can provide this letter for, so that we can go ahead with our grant application to get a lot of the money that you're worried about. So I would approve, I would simply make a motion to approve getting the letter filed with the state and moving. So that's the simple request for tonight.
Last comment is in New York City, we would call this a bait and switch deal.
Now, wait a minute, Laura, 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 if you're going to accuse me of baiting and switching.
Not you, not you.
Who?
The, the folks that originally brought us this project. We commit five million dollars, we'll take care of getting the other money.
We, and, and we have not, BERT has now organized a fundraising committee to go after philanthropy, private donations. They are doing the work for the grant applications there. BERT is heading up the effort to do it. I don't think anybody on this council, especially you, is doing it. So hopefully, we have people that, they have people that are working on it, so.
I'm not opposed to the project, I'm opposed to the timing. And we put the cart before the horse. That, the work that they're doing now should have been done earlier, but enough.
Anything else?
I don't know if it's worth getting into this, but I mean, the idea that there are projects that have to be done in the city, roads, et cetera, we're working on all of those currently. We can walk and chew gum. We have a capital improvement project for a reason. So there are a whole list of them. And we're currently working on a number of, all of those things at one time. So this does not, I, I'm not a fan of the money or how we're necessarily gonna potentially be getting there, but giving the idea or this false representation to the community that we're not doing road projects or infrastructure because we're doing this is not true, that's not accurate. So that just needed to be addressed. So that said, we need to, just moving forward with our partners, need to make sure that they're a hundred percent on the same page with us. Because when the land trust came, they asked us and they told us they wanted us for the appropriations. We need you to put in your federal appropriations, and when you do that, I need you to include the BERT thing. Benita Springs did that. Guess what? Collier didn't. Guess what? Astero didn't. So that, it doesn't matter, it has nothing to do with this now, but I'm just saying, as we are collaboratively working with them, this is the same thing that they said, you know, when we went to ask for the state, you know, to give us our projects. We did it, but did they? I don't know. It's not important to this.
I, I can only address Collier. Collier didn't need to because they've got, they've already committed TDC and 2020 money.
So they're covered.
They're covered. They could do this.
So it's really only Astero, but they didn't.
I don't know if Astero, what Astero told their lobbyists, I don't know, or their, if they.
And it's, it's fine. It's just something to be cognizant of. If, if we're moving forward with anything with everybody and we're all saying, hey, we're all gonna do this, we all gotta be doing this, but.
We're continuing to meet together and I'll be continuing to report to you on developments.
I will second the motion if it hasn't been seconded yet.
I think there was a second already. Uh, Jim, do you have any comments?
Yes, my, again, I'll, I'll go ahead and reiterate some of the concerns expressed by, by Councilman Carr. I think my biggest concern in this whole thing is conceptually, we're approving stuff without knowing what it is if we're put on the hook. We know that the purchase cost is approximately eighty-two million dollars. I have not, okay, okay, let me, let me finish first. And I, I know, what I don't know is how much is it gonna cost to build it once we bought it? And then lastly, if we're signing up to go ahead and management, what is our ongoing cost to manage that on annual basis? So that we can make sure that the revenue sources required from our taxpayers are there for that. I will make that concern, I will, when it comes to spending the money, I will just reiterate the fact that I will probably vote against this. But for the purpose of moving this on, more answers are required from BERT as to the details. And, and, and I would agree that some of this stuff should have been dotted and crossed a long time ago and it hasn't been. But that's my comment.
Well, point one, we'd always assumed that Lee County would be part of the project. So that delayed things for a while. Point two, the purchase price is seventy-two million, and we have commitments from all three parties. Point three, the funding for the construction is available through State Department of Transportation. I know you raised a concern about a downtown garage at the last meeting. I will tell you, there are private parties interested in working with the city to construct a downtown garage under a public-private partnership. So there are solutions out there that will present themselves to any number of issues that we have to deal with. I mean, you know, as Jesse said, we can, we can walk.
I appreciate that, Chris.
We can walk and chew gum at the same time. And, you know, I think that all we're doing tonight, and we can have our, you know, we can have another conversation, but all we're doing tonight is getting this thing done so we can make a proper grant application for a major portion of the money that we need to complete the purchase.
Any other comments? Roll call.
I did want to just clarify and make sure it was clear is BERT is a nonprofit organization of local citizens. TPL, I think is, I think is also what Councilwoman Carr was referring to, is an, is a separate organization that is putting the purchase price together. When Councilmember Corey was discussing fundraising, that is from our local citizens who are doing that, not TPL. So in essence, it is four partners, as it's BERT as the organization of the local nonprofit, the City of Benita, Village of Astero, and Collier County that is working on the fundraising. TPL is the entity that's working on the land transaction and the purchase. And I think that's where some of the clarification and comes from is, is the organization of that there.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, roll call?
Councilmember Folic.
Aye.
Councilmember Bogaz.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Purdon.
Aye.
Councilmember Carr.
Yo.
Mayor Gibson.
Aye.
Councilmember Corey.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitzpatrick.
Aye.
Motion carries six to one.
Thank you. All right, city attorney items.
I have just one item tonight, and that is another of the BG Mine roadway settlements. This one deals with three pieces of property. Three hard-working Americans, Stone Brunner, and Darlene's Grove LLC. Specifically, these things, these ones took a little bit longer to deal with because the design of our road would impact an existing berm and hydrological conditions on that. So the settlement proposal that's in front of you tonight, all being paid for again by BG Mine, the escrow funds, is a little more complicated than those in the past. It's not just cost land, business damages related to it, but it's also approvals from the parties to allow us to apply for and obtain the permits necessary to either retain portions of the berm or to modify the berm accordingly so that functionally it remains the same. And I'll look and see if Matt has any other additions on that. He's reading it for the first time.
No, I helped with the negotiation. Uh, thanks. No, we would just recommend approval.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion second. Roll call.
Councilmember Bogaz.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Purdon.
Aye.
Councilmember Carr.
Aye.
Mayor Gibson.
Aye.
Councilmember Corey.
Aye.
Councilmember Folic.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitzpatrick.
Aye.
All right, that's it, Derek.
That's it.
City manager items.
Um, thank you. At this time, I would like our finance director to come forward. We'd like to walk through some proposed budget calendar, and we'd like some input from you through the process so that we can begin advertising these as soon as possible. If, if there's some concerns, there's some, and I apologize, Jim. I'm, we're gonna be putting it up on the screen here for you to walk through some of these. But we're open to time changes. I know in the past, council has asked for certain, that we move certain meetings to the evenings for more public participation. So we put together a draft for you to talk about to see what your availability is. And also wanted to talk to you about the July second city council meeting as well.
Hi, good evening. As we do each year, we have to comply with Florida statutes that outlines how we adopt our budget between now and the end of September. So they have specific guidelines about hearing dates, meeting times, voting timelines. And we try to, we incorporate that each year into a proposed calendar for you all. So what you see before you is our proposal. Our first official budget workshop, we propose for it to be Wednesday, June 18th. And that, that is a day that you normally have a council meeting, you normally have it in the day. We have proposed that we have the budget hearing, budget workshop, excuse me, at 4:00 PM. And then the next item, we actually propose movement to an evening meeting so that the council meeting would be 5:30 immediately following that budget workshop. So hopefully, if you guys could give us some feedback on your schedule.
Can you recall, one of the reasons is we do not take decision-making in the budget workshops. So if there's any specific direction, we can confirm that then within the regular meeting as follow-up.
Yes, thank you very much. And then the next meeting that we have on your proposed schedule would be Wednesday, July 16th at 9:00 AM. And by Florida statutes, that would need to be your preliminary millage rate vote, and that would be your first of three millage rate votes as outlined in Florida statutes, and your stormwater utility fee vote. That is the date that we're required to adopt that so that we can submit it, and it would be on your trim notice that the property appraiser mails out.
And that meeting is regularly scheduled at nine, so we're not proposing a change there unless there's an interest from council to, to change that.
Yeah, I'm out of town on that day, but nine's probably better than 5:30 for me to, to call in, so.
Okay, great. So then what we're proposing are the next two city council meetings, having budget updates at your regular city council meetings so that, because you all will remember, recall that, that we, we continue to receive economic data and revenue estimates and things as we move through our budget process. So each meeting, we will update y'all on any changes with respect to revenue estimates or any expenditure estimate changes that we incur as well. Then we would have proposed our final two budget hearings in September. We were able to keep our regular city council meeting dates for Wednesdays. However, we, that meeting has to be at 5:01 or after. So we are proposing that we have both of them at 5:30. The initial one is Wednesday, September 3rd at 5:30. That will be your tentative budget hearing, first of two hearings, and that will include a millage rate vote. That's your second of three millage rate votes. And then the Wednesday, September 17th, by Florida law, we're going to be required to have that after 5:01. So we selected 5:30 to be consistent with our other meeting times. And that would be your final budget hearing, and that would include your final millage rate vote.
And the intent would be to hold the budget hearing, and then the mayor would gavel out of that meeting, and we'd move into, directly into our city council meeting.
Yes, thank you.
If, if there's more time and Lisa needs to reach out to you all individually as well, and, and we want to make sure we give Jim enough time to review this as well and give us feedback. But we wanted to start the conversation here, and then we would begin making sure that these are advertised in advance.
I have no problem with any of the time.
Yeah, it's great. It seems very considerate.
So you won't get any pushback.
All right, so then we can, we'll just, we'll bring those back for formal.
Okay, we'll have them for you at the next meeting.
For formal to move forward.
Thank you.
Um, in regards to our Hurricane Ian, Helena Milton updates, I did speak with our lobbyist a few times today. As Councilmember Corey kind of alluded to, the, the budget is sort of in a new, a new era of unknowns. But as of right now, our Rosemary Drive ask roadway improvement is in both sides of the House and Senate, as well as the five million dollar beach renourishment request. They will continue to keep us aware. I was asked to look at the Florida Forever program. It is not currently funded on the Senate side, but was said to me is that at this point, everything is up for continued negotiation and discussion. The House and Senate are continuing to discuss a negotiation among sales tax decreases, and the governor's office is still discussing with our lobbyist property, property taxes and what, what, what amendments might come forward to them. So it's still more to be known and seen in the future. I also wanted to prepare you all that unfortunately, we are only another meeting and so away from June 1st, which is the beginning of hurricane season. Tony and our regional, our area partners will be coming forward with an update, typically the second meeting of June, to just update everyone. BSU, LCSO, Benita Fire, and Lee County will be working with us to provide an update to our residents. We'll continue to be working on social media. We'll also be talking about rainy season updates, all in compliance with the CRS program. And then for the June 4th, the, the first meeting in June, I will be at the Florida Planning and Zoning Association meeting, so I will be by Zoom, but Matt will be here. I'll be in St. Augustine.
You're leaving him in charge? Frightening.
But I'll be available by phone, so. Thank you.
All right, mayor and council member reports. Councilmember Fitzpatrick.
Yes, good evening. First of all, I'd like to formally recognize and congratulate Lisa on her fifteen years of service. I'm celebrating coming my, close to my first six months on council. She has been an invaluable resource in my education process. council. She has been an invaluable resource in my education process, and I just want to thank her for all that she's done for both the city and for me and my education. Secondly, I'd like the staff's consideration to review, based upon its current condition, the potential inclusion of Hunter's Ridge Boulevard, or potential resurfacing, pothole repair, and restriping for inclusion in the 25, 26 budget process under the street repairs and maintenance programs that are in place today. And that's basically what I, that's the items that I have today.
Thank you, Jim. Nigel.
Want me to go first again? Okay.
Well, you're going second. Jim went first.
True. My apology again for the other phone going off. The guy that's always lecturing you all about turning your phones off, so a little red in the face. First thing I want to do is thank Mayor Gibson, and our City Manager Arlene, and Laura Taylor for joining me this morning. It's funny, some of our boards and some of our work outside the community gives you context. So long story short, I attended the Honor Flight last month, which I think I talked about. And the deputy tax collector for Collier County, his name is Jim Moore, good friend, good guy. We started talking about the Veterans Advisory Board, veterans, and turned out that the Rotary in Collier County had a couple of brand-new wheelchairs, which were not inexpensive, along with thousands of dollars of wheelchair parts. Could we help? So turns out that the Honor Flight actually has a gentleman who volunteers a time. They actually have a workshop where they repair wheelchairs. They were more excited about the wheelchair parts than they were about the two wheelchairs. But when they take our veterans up, and they took 84 up to Washington last month, these chairs get thrown on buses and in planes, so they get damaged. So literally, thousands of dollars of parts went to them. And I want to thank certainly the Rotary, because once again, Rotary doing their good work behind the scenes. But we did the exchange this morning, took some gratuitous pictures, and we're out of here in 15 minutes. But again, thank you, Mayor Mike, for making the time to do that, and Arlene and staff. And again, some of these advisory boards that we sit on, we can use them for other things. Memorial Day, obviously, Monday, May 26th, 9 o'clock, Admiral Murray, and we'll have the Boy Scout Troop, and it's troop number 191?
I thought it was 106, but I could be wrong.
But our local Boy Scout Troop, and then we'll have the Benita Springs High School Junior ROTC will be there present as well. Musical Memorial, for those of you who've not attended in the past, it's a one-hour event, but certainly worth attending. And then I want to also thank Nicole. I know she's not here tonight. But the Parks and Rec staff finally, we're not finally, but we're able to get the lights installed at the basketball courts just north of the baseball field. So those calls have stopped, and people are enjoying the.
It's Scout Troop 109, Benita Springs Scout.
I was close. Is it 191? But yeah, if you can, please make it out. And then the only, the other thing is, there's some, obviously, state, on the state level, TDC could be greatly affected, and we'll see what happens there. I personally would be concerned if TDC monies that we collect here were sent up to Tallahassee, be dispersed back to us. So hopefully, they get that solved.
Thank you, Nigel. Chris?
Piece of good news about the Wonder Gardens. I ran into the contractor who's doing the work on the Otter exhibit, and at a function Sunday night. And he tells me that should be wrapped up within the next week or so. And so I know that Neil and the staff over at the Wonder Gardens are prepared to open that. So that should be a big event when it happens. I know a lot of people have been looking forward to the Otter exhibit being finished. So that's something to keep in mind. So that's all I have.
Thank you. Laura?
Oh, gosh. I've been really busy, but it's been a long night. So I just want to say that our new superintendent of schools, Denise Carlin, Carlin, mentioned that she's dodging herself, and they're doing the executive branch. They're cutting waste so that they can pay teachers more. And they're paying on merit and results. And she's very excited about the, you know, the impact it'll have. Jesse?
Okay. Number one, congratulations to Ray Sandali to getting on the Veterans Affairs. That's a good, that's a good get, Nigel. I'll give you credit. That's a pretty good one, Arlene, too. So. And then also, I had a very good meeting with some folks who are sincerely looking into a potential project with us for a parking garage downtown. And I, I was, it was a very positive meeting. And I think, I think as, as you guys get more information on it, you know, be open-minded, because I think it really could be a very good project for us as a city. So I think we'll see more soon on that. That's all I've got.
Amy? From the fire department side, there are six new firefighters started last week, and they're doing a six-week orientation. And at the completion, they're going to be assigned to a shift. They are talking to a prospective buyer for the property at Station 27. And it seems pretty positive. It's the one on Hickory Boulevard. They seem pretty positive, and it looks like their vision is to keep it public with a restaurant on it. So they're looking forward to continuing talking with them. And also a reminder from the chief that it is dry season, and to please be careful. We're extremely dry around here, and fires are popping up, and just to be careful. And London Bay has, has a few announcements. They are doing a groundbreaking ceremony tomorrow morning for their second tower of the residence. And they also have exciting news, this is kind of a long one, that the restaurant that they're going to be opening, it's, they've had, it's called the Mina Group, a globally celebrated hospitality company founded by award-winning chef Michael Mina, known for creating exceptional dining experiences, has partnered with London Bay to operate the future public waterfront restaurant at Salt Leaf Marina. And they're very excited about that. He has a portfolio of over 30 chef-driven concepts across the United States and internationally. So that was exciting news. And yes.
Amy, is that going to be one that'll be open to the public?
Yes, it will be.
Great.
It will be open to the public. So yes, they're excited about that. And what else? I think I had one other thing. Yes, our next meeting on May 21st, I unfortunately am not going to be able to make it. I have family obligations, and during the time of the meeting is when my flight is, so I will not be able to call in. So I will not be able to make that, or the memorial service on Monday, which I'm disappointed in not being able to be there. So I have a niece getting married, so excited about that. But unfortunately, I won't be able to make it there. That's it.
We'll miss you.
Thank you.
Safe travels.
Thank you.
I also was going to bring up the groundbreaking tomorrow for London Bay. I'll be there at 9:00 AM. Last week, I had the pleasure of reading the Presidential Proclamation on the National Day of Prayer at Integrity Church downtown. Multiple churches got, got together there. They normally do it at the park, but with the ban shell closed, they, they had to move a block away. But it was well-attended, and it was a nice service. And then this past Sunday, we had the Mayor's Cup for the Benita Soccer League. And it was kind of a smaller-than-normal competition. Normally, they open it up and try to get some international teams coming in. But this year, it was all local teams. Their aspirations are for next year to open it up and be able to get international teams in again. So. But probably, the next evening meeting, wanted to look at bringing in the soccer league, just so we can kind of take some photos with them, and congratulate them on doing the Mayor's Cup again this year, and be supportive of them for next year's. And really.
Who won?
It, I forget what the name was. It was, yeah, it was one of the local, they were all local teams, but I think it might have been one out of Imoculie. I'm not positive, though. It was, they did all the competitions in one day, so they shortened the time of each match. And so the, the guys were very tired towards the end. There were a lot of cramps happening, and it ended in a shootout. So it was a very good game. So. Yep, we'll move on to public comment. We still have a few members of the public here, and can speak on anything. Time to shine. Come on up.
People have seen that commercial, the E-Mu, going down the road, and the guy yelling at them, you know, you're a dreamer. I sent this letter, this email, to all the government officials in the area, as many as I can come up with. I said, "I recently read the traffic study commissioned by local governments, which predicted major disastrous traffic congestion within the next 10 years. Attached, please find the correspondence I have with Leitner-Poma, one of the world's largest contractors of aerial trams. It would seem that our current and future traffic dilemma might benefit from such a transportation system. Think of trams running north and south along the current abandoned rail tracks, and east and west connecting across the bay of Fort Myers Beach, eliminating traffic jams at both ends of the beach in Benita and Fort Myers, as well as easy access to Lover's Key State Park with a tram connecting from FGCU to Coconut Point Mall across the Lover's Key State Park in the middle of the island. Once dropped off at Lover's Key State Park, people could use the current bus system to go up and down the beach, taking advantage of all the restaurants and entertainment attractions. This form of transportation is the fastest-growing form of urban transportation in the world, and is far less costly than roads and bridge construction. It would seem our area is ideal for such a plan, which could solve our predicted traffic problem, as well as increased property values, as access to the beaches would be much easier for residential properties east of 41 on the mainland. This system would enhance our area as a premier destination for homeownership. I would think funding might come from local, state, and federal governments. I hope the various governments in our area would accept the offer from Mr. Manley of Leitner-Poma to make a presentation on the advantages and possibilities of tram systems. Please take time to view the various YouTube links, which I provided in my email. Mr. Manley provided to look at completed projects. If any officials, as a group or individual, want to meet with Mr. Manley, please feel free to contact him directly, or I would be happy to make arrangements as necessary." Trams are the fastest-growing form of transportation, urban transportation, in the world. And the thing that I, I thought of is you wouldn't, you know, there's, you're not going to start building a tram system all over the place. But something from the mainland, in the middle of the island, over to Fort Myers Beach, would solve an awful lot of traffic congestion problems on Benita Beach Road and North Fort Myers Beach. Our family's someone in the construction business in the area. It's getting impossible to do major projects now. The workers can't get there on time. Delivery of materials is becoming almost impossible. The amount of time it's lost is bizarre. This is just a thought. And, and I spoke to these gentlemen. I'm kind of fortunate. I have two kids and a World Cup. They're both skiers. And so I get to go to the ski resorts a lot. And I met with the, you know, Leitner-Poma people, one of them had a kid in the competitions. And the systems that they put are really, really interesting. 30 people at a time moving in these things. I mean, just think of the traffic problem we have now, and what it's going to be. So I just encourage you to maybe meet with your counterparts. And I'd like to talk to Joanne Ripple, and maybe some other people in Lee County. Just to put on the thinking caps, see what is available other than conventional traffic instruction. Thank you for your time. I'd like to submit this, Mr. Mayor, for the record, giving it to the clerk. Is that permissible? Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
What was your name again?
Seeing none. Motion to adjourn.
Motion.